Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 13th, 2014, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Thanks for coming, everybody. We have an exciting agenda with quite a few items tonight. The way the process works, we're starting off with a couple of sketch plans, which are somewhat unofficial preliminary plans that applicants bring in for us to take a look at, but it's not an official public hearing, so they just want to get some feedback on a, an idea for an application. So we have two of those, and then we have two public hearings, and on the agenda it has three, but number one was withdrawn late this afternoon. So, the applicant will give their presentation, the board will ask questions, and then we'll open it up for anybody to participate in the audience that feels to do so. So Katie, and what, just, I have a terrible cough, so if I look or sound like I'm hacking up along, just for, you know, I'm sorry.
Just to add on to Chairman Hetske's introduction, there are sign-in sheets on the table when you first walk in, so if you wish to present to the board, you're all welcome. We just ask that you fill out one of those sign-in sheets and put it in the basket, and one of our staff members will bring it up. Okay. Application number one, Edwin A. Summerhays, LS, 2559 Broncroft Boulevard, Suite 209, Rochester, New York, 14606. On behalf of UGA, request an informal discussion with the board regarding the construction of a 2,872 square foot dental office located at 2,100 Penfield Road on 0.46 acres. The property is now or formerly owned by Bernard and Anita Marvin and is zoned BNR. Application number 14P-0003, SBL number 139-08-1-61.
Good evening. My name is Ed Summerhays, and I'm here on behalf of and with my client, UGA dentist, and what she would like to do in this particular area, it's that one area of Penfield that was recently zone, changed, zoning change from, from the residential to the business non-commercial, or non-retail, and so this is one of our first lots that are in that area that is going to be developed into an office. So she would like to take the existing house that's there and reconstruct a dentist office. So what we've done, we've gotten in an advance, our topographic survey, so that we could see properly approximately what's going on with the drainage out there. Generally, it drains from the northwest corner of the lot to the southeast corner of the lot, so that the, so the proposals that we have, the, with the dentist office and the parking in the rear, is, we're going to try to maintain that drainage pattern that exists now, where everything will come out towards Penfield Road. The town of Penfield does have a drainage system there that's, excuse me, underneath the walk, and we'll be tying into that. But to alleviate some of the additional stormwater drainage that's going to result from the parking in the building, at this point, on the preliminary scale or sketch plan scale, we're designed a, or have proposed, a rain garden that will have all the roof and building runoff directed into the rain garden. And on the parking lot in the back, because it is the desire of the town to have all the parking on these new projects in the back rather than the front, that will all be directed towards a, an infiltration trench along the east lot property line that will then come down to the road. Now, in order to try to accomplish what the town plan is now for this area and Hugh's plan for what she wants to do, the, the building that she has is, is large enough where unfortunately, between the building and the amount of parking required for this building is going, is, we've kind of exceeded our, our setback limitations, so that I have applied for a zoning variance for a front setback and a side setback, and I hope to be before the board next, next week to discuss those options with her. One of the other variances that we're going to be requesting, although I think it eventually is going to be going away, is, is part of this resolution, town resolution, to change this, this area of Penfield into a business district, they're trying to eliminate traffic coming off of the Penfield Road. So, we are, we will be constructing a private drive in the backyard that will actually start and end at our property line until the, the time, you know, when everybody has kind of moved in there, and then that can be open, so, but because of that parking lot, or that driveway in the back, that blacktop drive in the back, we're going to be exceeding our lot coverage of 65 percent, I think it was 66 percent. But that will go away, because once that rear driveway is completed, and everybody's using that now to access these businesses that are going to be along Penfield Road there, the Penfield Road access will be eliminated, and so that we will get back down to a point where we're under the 65 percent, I think it comes out 64 percent. Since, and unfortunately, I'm sorry, her architect, Scott Powell, was planning on being here, and he was going to have a rendering, a front rendering elevation that would also help, and he was going to be able to help answer any questions you might have about the building specifics, and I don't see him yet, so, so traffic might be holding him up, and, and I know you have a busy schedule, so I won't, I won't, I won't try to stall in giving him time to get here. I have received the comments from the, the planning committee, and from what I've seen, I don't, I don't see any objection to any of the comments that, that I see, you know, things that you would like to see on the plans. I think there's only one here that I really can answer, it's going to be really up to the architect to answer, and that was building lighting. I don't believe she wants any lighting in the, in the driveway or light posts in the, in the parking area. I think any lighting will be affixed to the building, but unfortunately, he's not here to answer that particular question. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up to her, or allow any, let you go right to your...
Questions? I have a question. Was I correct in reading 13 parking spaces?
I thought I had 14.
Okay. Close. The reason for the question is there's, looks like there's one, two, three, four, five, six, six examination rooms?
I've got, okay, I got 14 parking spaces in the back and a handicap in the front gives us 15.
Okay.
And now the number of rooms, I think it was 10?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
10 upper?
Looks like six.
Six.
But then you got a receptionist probably, and, so, are all six, like, do you have six dental hygienists or six dentists, six staff members working at a time, plus administrative staff, plus customers?
I'm going to have to defer to, oh, thanks. You have, I, I'm going to have to have you answer that question, because I don't know how many.
Okay. Do, do you mind coming up to, and introducing yourself, and there's millions of people at home watching?
Hi, hello, everyone. My name is Hugh. I'm a dentist in Penfield and looking to build a dental office on 2,100 Penfield Road. So to open, to answer the chairman's question, yes, I'm planning to have six rooms equipped to operate when I'm in full capacity, so there could potentially be six people working on six patients at the same time.
So that'd be 12 cars?
Right.
Probably. And then your receptionist?
Right.
Okay, so parking's kind of tight.
It is, it is, but we're trying to do our best with the, with the space that's provided, so...
You start, you, Ed, you went over some variances?
Yeah, all right. Yeah, the, the, the size of the building that they have, with the size of the rooms that she has, has caused the building to be a little bit larger than, wider and longer than what we had originally planned on when we first started discussing this project. So what I've done is I've moved the building forward a little bit to allow more, the parking spaces in the back. What I, one of the, I had met with Seth earlier on at the beginning of this project, and I tried to cut down the, the drive space between the parking spaces, but after a discussion, we said, you know, it's, it's better for the patient's safety and the pedestrian's safety for coming in and parking, pulling in and out of these spaces, to, to not cut that space short. So, so maintaining the, the drive lanes and the parking spaces, the proper size in the back, it pushes the for, the building forward a little bit. So I think I'm asking, there's an overhang on the front of the building, the, so the, and, which I...
Yeah, we, we have rendering, so...
You have, you have the rendering of it. That, that overhang is going to be 36 feet from the front right-of-way line.
Okay.
The main building would be an additional four feet back, so 40 feet off of that, and on the left side, we're going to have the building 17 feet off the property line rather than the required 20. This will allow, moving it over that way rather than shifting it or keeping it within the setback is going to allow us to have the proper width driveway going back to the rear property line, and also leave a, oh, good, thanks. And also, also help, you know, it'll give us room for, for some landscaping, some water, and the silk, the infiltration trenches.
The rain garden.
So, it looks like Scott is here, and if, if you have a presentation to make, or if you'd like to hang up your, your rendering, and then any questions on the building, I...
I have a question for you, Ed, before you sit down. Can you share with the board what the plans would be for the impervious surface from the existing curb cut, once the service road goes into the back and you're no longer entering the property from Penfield Road?
I'm sorry, what will happen to the surface runoff?
You have a handicap accessible parking space in the front, and you have the, the curb cut in the entryway off of Penfield Road.
The handicap spot will remain there.
Will remain.
But the, we will cut, the, the pavement will be removed for the entrance, and, and that drainage will go to, I've got out there in the front, I have, and actually, and are looking at it either, two catch basins, right now I have an end section on the west side of the driveway that might have to be a little catch basin that will take overflow and surface drainage from the front of the property over to the, the major catch basin or corner catch basin, which is going to be collecting everything and then transferring it to the, to the town infrastructure.
And are you proposing to maintain a T-turnaround so that people that are using the accessible parking space could back into the T and then pull out to the rear?
Yes. We, that would be, so that there would be that turnaround there, yeah.
Okay. And, and you're prepared to provide the board with a sketch plan that shows what that might look like?
In the, okay, yeah.
Once the service road goes in?
Yeah.
With some landscape buffering and things from Penfield Road?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Ed at the moment? Scott, do you want to?
And this is Scott Powell, Hugh's architect.
I just, I want to make a correction to the, to my...
Sure.
Just wanted to make a correction to my answer. I wasn't really thinking clearly. So, at full capacity, I will have, we will have six patients in the rooms at once, but I'm not going to have six people working on those six, six patients.
Okay.
So at most, there will be two dentists and one or two hygienists. And that's it.
Thank you.
Scott Powell, from Architecture of PC. The rendering on the board in which you had submitted to you illustrates the front view of the dental offices. The client was interested in having a classy-looking place, yet somewhat fitting into the residential area. We understand that this area is not planned to stay residential, though, so we didn't want to be too residential-looking. So we just did a simple classy-looking dental office. And really, that's about it for the presentation. There's cultured stone on the bottom, synthetic stucco around the top, and a pitched roof with architectural-style windows.
Okay. Any questions for?
I, I just want to know if Scott was in the audience when the architect for the, for the bank came in, because many of the details that we asked for on that application are shown in your rendering here, so, nice job.
No, I wasn't.
Bank was on the corner of Harris Whalen Park Drive and Penfield Road. There was two parcels that at one time had been proposed demolition of the two residents in that quadrant, and a key bank was proposed, and we went through extensive discussions of, with the board and the applicant over the architecture, that's what I remember it was referring to.
It's coincidental.
Okay.
Nice job.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience have a comment or would like to speak about this? Sir, if you could just come up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record?
My name is Abbas Nadir. I'm from 2104 Penfield Road, dear next-door neighbor. My first question is, how do you access parking spot that you want to say in the back of Is that going to be from the school area?
So, are you asking how to get to the rear parking areas?
Yes, right.
There's a driveway, current, there will be, at first, a driveway off of Penfield Road that goes down the side?
Yes.
Of the building to access the parking in the back.
Okay, so, I misunderstood. I thought that the six or seven parking lot that you have in the back of the house will be from the back of the house area, from the school area.
That's, in the future, the town is interested in cross-access behind those buildings to reduce traffic on 441.
Okay.
So ultimately, when all those properties turn into commercial uses, the, the plan is to have an access road back there.
Okay.
So, at that point in time, that front, the 441 access would be cut off, and the building would be accessed through the access road off of Harris Whalen Drive.
Is this picture going to be the new building, or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. One, one request that I hope they are going to keep a small dog, not the huge ones, and because the dogs were out all the times at six o'clock, five o'clock in the morning, and so, you're not keeping dogs?
My guess, there probably won't be any dogs.
Might need dental service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment on this? Ed, do you have anything final?
Nothing to add, other than from here, once we have your recommendations and everything else, we'll get started on that site plan and, and hopefully see you soon.
Yeah, we'll get our heads together, get a letter off, and we'll go from there.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Katie, you want to read the second one?
Sure. Before I go into the second legal notice, I just wanted to mention, if anyone ever has any questions about the applications that are presented tonight and what the next steps are, or if you need more information about what was discussed at the meeting, please feel free to contact the planning department, and I'm sure the, there's our number on the screen, or, or call the town and they can transfer you directly to the department, and we'd be happy to either meet with you or share information over the phone. Okay? Application number two, Robert Wolf of Wolf Architecture, 3 North Main, Honeybee Falls, New York, 14472. On behalf of Benjamin Peters, OD, and Dr. Justin Verone, OD, request an informal discussion with the board regarding the construction of a 5,634 square foot optometry medical office located at 2,142 Penfield Road on 0.46 acres. The property is now or formerly owned by Lillian Detwiler and is zoned BNR. Application number 14P-0004, SBL number 139.08-1-73.
Thank you. My name's Robert Wolf with Wolf Architecture, and I'm here representing Dr. Justin Verone and Dr. Benjamin Peters, and they run Eyesight, which is currently also located off of Penfield Road. We are here tonight seeking some kind of indication, if you could give it to us, how you might recommend this project to the zoning board. Currently, we, we are barely into the programming phases, and we haven't yet engaged a site engineer, because they have yet to close on the property. And so before they do, they'd like to get some kind of an indication, if there are any deal breakers out there, if you will, to their potential closing, before they invest more heavily in the process. And so, as a result of this, any kind of early indication that you could give us would be appreciated. They, they're moving because they want to remain in Penfield, and they're expanding from 3,400 square feet to approximately 5,500 square feet, which we've shown on these preliminary drawings. Their parking, we will be asking for a few variances. Parking is one, the required number is 31, in the town of Penfield, we're proposing to provide 20. The side setback, we're proposing, on the east side of the project, adjacent to the Summit View parcel, to reduce from 20 to 10 feet. And we feel it's especially appropriate on this side, since there's a drive-through on that side, and there's no real permanent presence, permanent occupied presence on that side of the building. The front setback, we proposed, instead of providing 80 feet, to, to reduce that to 35, and that's primarily due to the cross-axis easement in the rear of the project, it's necessarily pushing the parking in the building closer to the street, and I would maintain it's, it's going to present a nicer street, once the buildings get closer, and there becomes a little more opportunity to actually look in the front window, and possibly, maybe someday, some pedestrian involvement, which we would, if you look at our elevation, we're proposing to accommodate that. We'd like to offer some large display windows, some, to let in a lot of light, and, and hopefully help the community feel engaged. These are all very preliminary, by the way, almost placeholders, to give you an idea of some of the language we might want to use. We want to have an entry on the front, and the way we've kind of oriented the, this, the plan on the site, you can enter both from the front and the rear into a common vestibule and then enter into the building, so, trying to use the site efficiently, but also to be a good neighbor to the street. We are asking for a relief from the lot coverage requirement of 65 percent impervious versus 35. Currently, we're asking for 80/20. We think it'll probably come to less than that. After we addressed your comments, we noticed that some of your comments wanted us to back the parking away from the property line. We presented a three-foot buffer on the west side of the parking area, and that's reducing our impervious ratios from what we presented down to about 72 and 28. So, there's already kind of movement, reducing the lot coverage. And the parking space size, we're asking for a variance from a 10-by-20 parking space to a 9-by-18, which I understand is fairly common. In our meeting with the staff, they indicated that it has been done elsewhere in, in the town, and so, we'd like to do that, and again, to be more efficient, as efficient as we can. Also included in the application are two support letters, one from the Summit View Federal Credit Union, immediately to the east, and another one from their neighbors at 2,140 Penfield Road, in support of this project. And, and basically, just to recap, we want to present a front door to the street, we want to have a lot of glass, we want it to be open, we want to use updated materials, perhaps. We'd like to have some wood to give it some warmth, but also want to leave the, the door open to perhaps a flat roof, because that's a more commercial presentation. And what we haven't gotten into yet is the landscaping and the site design, and a lot of my response to your comments had to do with that, that Ed Summerhays will be retained as the surveyor, and, and he's got a site design team that will be working with us on this, and thank God, Ed can do double duty tonight, he's one and two on the, on the docket, so, and, and again, we're looking for some kind of early indication, so that the doctors, I'm going to invite them to come up and, and share a few words, but my understanding is they want to remain in the town, they've been here for quite a while, and they feel this is a perfect opportunity, because it's very close to their current location. So, doctors?
So, my name's Dr. Justin Verone, I'm here with Dr. Benjamin Peters, my partner, and thanks for hearing our application. We are very excited about this opportunity, because we're at 2,160 Penfield Road right now, so we're 200 yards, maybe not even away from this, and we, we need more space. I mean, we're, we've been there 20 years. We have two physicians typically there each day, we also have opticians, which are the eyeglass professionals that support the patients coming through with their eyeglass needs, and then administrative and doctor support staff. So, we are just trying to get a feel, as Rob mentioned, from you guys, whether this project had legs, because, you know, we have a few months before I drop dead date on the closing, but we didn't want to get too deep into this unless we were getting some positive feedback from the town with what we're trying to accomplish. So, we currently typically use between 10 and 15 parking spots, we can get up to 17 to 20 when we're really cranking, which is why we're, we're trying to get 20 spots on there, why we're asking for the 9-by-18. You know, this building has to be two stories, otherwise, we're just duplicating what we have now. So, we, we're 3,400 square feet in our current location that we rent, and that's all on one floor, so in order to give us the increased capacity, we're going to move some of the things that we know we could put on the second floor that wouldn't affect our patients, in case they were wheelchair-bound, or those kinds of things. We do have a large elderly patient base, so most of our patient care would be on the first floor. So, the, the parking variance is, is a, probably a critical one. We, we feel good about that number 20, I think it gives us some room to grow. You know, we're excited about that side of the street, we're there now, we've seen the growth. The senior partner who recently retired, he was the first one in the Parkside Commons Plaza, it was him and Wegmans, so, we've seen all the growth along that street, and, and I think this is kind of the next phase of things, and I'm sure you guys hopefully feel that way, too. You know, I think the landscaping will be really great, I know Rob was a little, you know, we haven't gotten that far into it, but I think that front landscaping will really create a nice frontage for when you're driving by, and we want people to feel invited to walk in, although it's probably not all that realistic on 441, but having a front and rear entrance is important to us. And we, we think we're going to be able to add staff, add jobs, which is, I think, a good thing, obviously, with this expansion, add another physician to be there, instead of us only being able to have two, we'd be able to have three physicians, and that immediately creates more jobs underneath, because we have support staff for the, the, every physician we add adds a couple of more job openings potentially for us, so. I know you guys got a lot of cases tonight here, so I guess I'll leave it at that. Dr. Peters, do you want to come up, or do you guys have any questions for me?
I, I have a question for you. Your architect mentioned that the, that the front elevation that's been presented is something that hasn't really been set in stone yet, that there's some flexibility here, and I want to know how committed you and your partner... And I want to know how committed you and your partner are to this type of a front facade.
How committed we are to the height of the front facade?
No, not necessarily. We're really looking at curb appeal, you know, how the street front face of the building looks in concert with the other buildings in that portion of the town.
Well, I think, you know, if the town's looking to sort of keep that looking traditionally residential, or looking to sort of make that become something a little bit trendier, I just don't, you know, I would, not to kick the question back to you guys, but, you know, we would like to modernize that part of the, you know, I know not every business going in there is going to maybe want to go ultra-modern, and we're not looking to go ultra-modern, but we're also not looking to have every building look like the Summit Credit Union and the Metro Mattress and the Parkside Commons Plaza, and then they all start looking like the same thing over and over and over. I mean, I think some diversity is good for the community, too. We're not looking to stand out like a sore thumb, but we're also not looking to just blend in. We, you know, we're going to ask you guys to give us some feedback on things that we'd like to present, different materials and different architecture than maybe that are on that street now. But inevitably, we want to work together to work with what the town feels is appropriate, but also maybe create some diversity to that space, you know, where, so. We're not stuck in the mud, I guess, would be the short answer.
Fair enough.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time again.
Benjamin Peters, thanks for having us again. And to answer your question on that, I think, well, it was early on in the design process as well, so there's going to be a lot of changes as we go forward. We just wanted to get something in front of you, again, along our thought lines of a nice welcoming place, modern, and, you know, a good curb appeal for the town.
Okay. Phil, did you have a question?
I have a question.
Anybody on the board have?
Awesome.
Okay. Thanks. Just like sketch number one, we'll get our heads together and get a response letter.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. Anyone in the audience care to comment on this application? So we'll go on to the next one.
Okay. This is, once again, public hearing agenda item number one was withdrawn, so we're going to move on to public hearing agenda item number two, and welcome Edwin A. Summerhaze back up. Address 2509 Browncroft Boulevard, Suite 209, Rochester, New York, 14625. On behalf of Michael Amico, request under Articles 8-8-2 and 9-9-2 of the code for preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval to create two lots. Lot one, consisting of 6.7 acres, will retain the existing residence, and Lot two, consisting of 1.13 acres, proposes to construct a single-family residence at 1042 Whalen Road. The properties now are formerly owned by Sam and Nellie Amico and is zoned R-1-20. Application number 14P-0002, SBL number 124, excuse me, 124.16-1-40.
Okay, thank you. And I'll make this one maybe a little bit quicker. I think you're all familiar with this one, and we have more comment. It's originally, it's an eight-acre-sized parcel on the north side of Whalen Road, and Mr. Amico would like his son to have the opportunity to build a house and live next to him. So this application will address that. We've done our perk tests in the area, we've done our topographic survey, we've prepared the site plan, and we're now looking for an approval. Since this is, since we've made application, I have received the comments from the Conservation Board, and at this point, I don't see any of those comments that we could not adhere to. I talked to my client earlier today because I had a little concern about a one-for-one. We are going to have to remove a couple spruce trees to make room for the improvements, and we are planting two street trees, which is called for in the site design, the design guidelines for Penfield. And so I thought making him replace a tree with every tree that he's taken out goes beyond what the design standards call for. However, he loves trees, and he's planning on, as a matter of fact, his father is investigating having those removed and transplanted. I think they're a little bit large, but if they can do that, that's what they want to do. If he can, he is going to be planting trees. So regarding the Conservation Board's comments, those we pretty much can adhere to. We also have comments from the Monroe County Planning Council, and once again, there's no comments there that I have any objection to that we'll be able to accommodate all of those. As a matter of fact, on the drawing board, we've already accommodated or changed, edited the plans to address the Monroe County planning. I've also since then received the comments from the PRC Committee Meeting, and it's a, I think it's about at this point that I really need to apologize. I was in a hurry that day, and I dragged the drawing off of my, another computer, dragged it onto my computer, opened it up, I didn't literally look at it, I made a PDF and submitted that PDF to the staff. And then when I got these comments from the Planning Committee, I said, "That's shown, that's shown, that's shown." And when I looked at the PDF that I sent to town, it was not shown. It was not shown. However, your paper copies, if you have all paper copies, you will see that all, most of these comments that came from staff are really already on the plan. So I think that we really have everything all set as far as answering all the questions and comments and concerns that have come forth, other than what you have tonight.
Okay. I have just a few. The whole property's about 8 acres?
Yes.
What are his future plans for the rest of that property?
Right now, he just plans on leaving it as at his, I believe, and I haven't even checked the audience to see if he's here. Oh, he is back there. All right. My client's in the back there. I believe he has another sister, but I don't, and so there could be, you know, if she wants to, if she wants to, and we would probably position that over on that other side. But that's down the road, and I don't know if you want to come in and answer that question or not. Mike Amico, my client, is here. Unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to greet him at the door and talk to him.
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us.
Sure.
Any questions I can answer for you? Feel free.
Well, just first, if you could introduce yourself and give us your address for the record.
Okay. My current address is 156 Hickory Manor Drive in Gates. Michael Amico. My father's the property owner at the present time. So my wife Tiffany and I are looking to, you know, construct a primary residence on the property.
Do you know what future plans are for the balance of the acreage?
As of right now, there are no future plans, just remainder of my parents' home on the six acres that'll be left, and ours will be roughly just about two, just under two.
Okay. Okay.
I just have a question. You can keep the same driveway right off?
Yes, we'll have the same common driveway, and we'll veer off the one and have a side little garage into the house.
There'll be official easements for that?
Yes.
Down the road?
Yes.
You're going to keep with the same, like, structure like your parents' home?
It's, I'm looking for it to complement my father's house, but not be exactly like it. It will be a ranch, and it'll have a hip roof. We don't have a blueprint as of right now. We just wanted to kind of, you know, speak with the board first and just see how that went, and we have some that we're looking at, and...
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
It's a beautiful property right now.
Thank you. Thank you. We're looking forward to it. I grew up in the town, and we're looking forward to coming back and having some, you know, some land and area and stuff like that.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience care to comment on this application?
Thank you. Have a good night.
You're welcome. Yeah, sir, if you could come up and introduce yourself and give us your address.
My name's Pietro Fergioli, and I live at 1045 Whalen Road. I live directly across the street from the applicant, and I believe if anyone is going to be affected by this application, it would be me. And for the past 15 years, I've had the extreme pleasure of looking out my window every morning and seeing the most pristine neighbor and property that you could imagine. I've known Sam, I consider him family, for those 15 years. And in those 15 years, I've traversed many Penfield parks, and they are wonderful, but none of them stack up to Sam's property. And he's done an amazing job keeping the property. He maintains the lawn. Like you mentioned, he's planted every single one of those 100 spruce trees, and I have full confidence that if he were to remove any trees, he would replace them diligently. Sam's house, the one that's on the property now, is immaculate. I thought my grandparents' home was the only one that I could eat off the floor of the garage, but his floor you could eat off of. It is spotless. Sam routinely is seen walking the 800-foot of Whalen Road, picking up trash. It's, you know, inevitable that trash will fly out on Whalen Road, and Sam is out there daily, picking up bottles and cans and things. He's a great asset to have in the town of Penfield and as a neighbor. And if there's one person that would be as diligent or good as a neighbor or homeowner, it would be his son, Michael, and I've known him for 15 years. And he would make a wonderful neighbor and a wonderful addition to the town of Penfield, and I strongly urge the acceptance of the proposal, and I look forward to them developing right across the street so I could look out and enjoy two great neighbors instead of one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Andy Moore, 1928 Jackson Road, and my wife and I own the property that abuts up to Mr. Amico's property. Basically, our backyards connect with each other. So I am in full support of Mr. Amico's desire to sell the property and have his son build a house. I graduated from Penfield High School, and I know Mike Amico went to Penfield High School also. As Pietro said, there is not a more impeccable yard than Sam's yard. I mean, for eight acres, I don't think I've ever seen a dandelion in his property. So I, too, see him walking up and down Whalen Road, collecting trash, see him walking around his yard. My kids sneak onto his property and run in their yard quite often. He's a fabulous neighbor to have. I wish every neighbor was like him. Again, on behalf of my wife and myself, we fully support this application and look forward to having Mike as a neighbor in Penfield. Thank you.
Thanks, councilman. Anyone else? Anybody else on the board have a comment? Mr. Summerhaze, thank you very much.
I have no other comments, although in retrospect, I think I should have had the neighbors do my presentation for me.
Yeah.
So, thanks.
They did a better job than you.
They did a great job. Thanks very much.
Thanks. All right.
Public hearing agenda item number three. Christopher Marks, 444 East Main Street, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Eastside Family YMCA, request under Articles 9-9-2 and 10-10-2 of the code for preliminary and final site plan and an expansion to an existing conditional use permit approval, conditional use permit. Also, approval to construct a 20,650 square-foot addition to the existing building with associated site improvements. The applicant also requests under Article 3-3-36 and 10-10-2 of the code, conditional use permit approval for wellness partner to operate within the proposed expansion, all located at 1835 and 1835B Fairport Nine Mile Point Road on 50.83 acres. The property is now or formerly owned by the YMCA of Greater Rochester and is zoned RA-2. Application number 14P-005, SBL number 125.01-1-34.13, and 125.01-1-34.12.
All right, Chris, you're up.
Hello, I'm Christopher Marks, Vice President of Properties at the YMCA of Greater Rochester, and I have with me here today Kevin Fitzpatrick, the branch executive for the Eastside Family YMCA. I also have Leon Zoyko from Harris Beach, Mark Kenward from Erdman &amp; Anthony, Steve Ferranti from SRF Associates, Jeff Rolson with La Bella, George Romel, our president and CEO of YMCA of Greater Rochester. And I'll start right off and hand it to Kevin so he can explain the project.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Fitzpatrick. I live at 12 Chatworth Circle North in Penfield, New York, actually Fairport, but Penfield School District, Penfield taxes, all that fun stuff in Penfield. For the past seven years, it's been my privilege to serve as Executive Director of the Eastside YMCA in its evolution from a farmer's field. So if you remember what it was eight years ago, it really was just a farmer's field, to its present status as a successful community facility, as the single largest branch of the YMCA of Greater Rochester with nearly 20,000 members. Also rated as number one in the YMCA in the nation in customer satisfaction. We are proud to have achieved this unique status right here in the town of Penfield, where I reside with my family. I know that this success has occurred only because of the encouragement, support, and generosity of a broad spectrum of community leaders, staff, and dedicated members. Throughout this exciting journey, my constant highest personal commitment, and that of the Eastside YMCA's 397 staff members here in Penfield, has been to improve the quality of life for the families, adults, and children in Penfield, and the 14 communities we serve. The wise mission, if you don't know, is to promote a healthy mind, a healthy body, and a healthy community by fostering youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. In order to give added scope and depth to these commitments, Eastside is now proposing an expansion of our physical plant, while enhancing and following a national trend with YMCA's diversifying and increasing wellness services that are provided. And I think Katie has sent you some of those articles that, along to them, that sort of shows where the national Y and what the Y is trying to do to expand wellness and services throughout the entire nation. Our proposal provides for a 21,000-square-foot expansion of our footprint. The YMCA looks to add 171 new parking spots. So all of you members out there, we will have more parking, we hope, eventually. Add a new family gym, a sports performance center, senior programming, and a large studio, cardio space, and chronic disease prevention programings, all aimed at improving the wellness experience of our members and the community. Additionally, a portion of this proposed expansion, 6,000 to 9,000 square feet, will accommodate a variety of services provided by UR Medicine, including primary care physicians, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and orthopedic rehab. This exciting new partnership with UR Medicine is indispensable to the financial feasibility of our proposed expansion. It is true that we are blessed with a growing and substantial membership, but as Eastside, but at Eastside, we also have a commitment not to turn any child or family away because of a genuine financial hardship and their ability to pay. Since our opening in October 2006, we've been able to honor that commitment. By raw numbers alone, we could divert a portion of the nearly third of a million dollars we annually give out in scholarship assistance in order to pay for our expansion. But it would be a betrayal of our fundamental values to undertake any project that would compel us to shut the doors on families and children in need. Faced with that stark choice, we would rather be congested than exclusionary. The town of Penfield has determined that under its existing zoning laws, the inclusion of the facilities by UR Medicine may not be permissible, hence Eastside's application and our appearance here. I would be remiss at this point if I didn't refer to the town's 2010 comprehensive plan, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. The introduction to that plan states, "The purpose of this plan is to provide an overall framework for future public and private investment in our community." It goes on to say, "This plan..." It goes on to say, "This plan articulates the vision of the town and establishes the community's policies and strategies in order to achieve that vision. It will serve as the foundation upon which future planning and decisions may be based." Some of the key benchmarks that are in the plan: Support changes to the town's existing land use pattern that are consistent with the future land use map. Allow for goods and services needed to support local residents in close proximity to residential areas. Continue to provide quality community resources. Reviewing boards should be sensitive to and encourage compatibility with the developed densities and character of the surrounding areas." So hopefully, that's not new. That's what we're trying to do in Penfield. Now I'm referring to the final, now I want to refer just quickly back to the final environmental impact study. I'm sure Leon will talk to that a little bit more. That was issued in 2005. That impact study says, it states, "Furthermore, based on the planning board's approval of the initial application, considering that the board has determined that the proposed YMCA's with the amenities it provides is the most appropriate buffer or transitional type for this location, providing programs and activities residents of most communities desire and which are becoming a matter of course in many planned communities across the country." This clearly points out that the YMCA's property is no longer residential, but considered transitional and a buffer, creating a very unique piece of property in our town. This in turn has prompted the town to now look at this very area for mixed use. Back to the town's comprehensive plan, which I know was approved by the town board, but did the planning board also approve that? No.
That is a legislative action that only the town board can approve.
Okay. So in that, so in that, if you haven't seen it, in that actually town comprehensive plan, it says, "Under community resources, the health, safety, and welfare of a community continues to change over time for a variety of reasons. The town and its partners will have to monitor the community's requirements and respond accordingly." Here's your chance to respond accordingly, I think. I'd like to focus my remaining comments on two key issues: Compatibility and precedence. First, compatibility. The inclusion of space for UR Medicine services in our proposed expansion is not a merit of convenience, rather this new and exciting partnership is rooted in a shared foundational commitment of our two institutions to the health and wellness of the children and families in our communities, exactly what our approval was based on in 2005. The mission of the Eastside YMCA, the YMCA of Greater Rochester, and UR Medicine are not conflicting, but mutually reinforcing. Aside from any financial consideration, the YMCA would be thrilled to be able to provide space to co-locate the services proposed for this site by UR Medicine, including the new primary care practice at a very time when other communities are alarmed by the prospect of a growing shortage of such services. The second dimension of compatibility concerns our Penfield community. There has never, ever been a hint that the expansion we propose would in any way damage or threaten the interests of any other Penfield resident. Every Penfield, every Eastside adjacent property owner, some of whom are here today, has endorsed our application. This enthusiasm has been echoed by the response of community leaders we have consulted in our nearly two years of planning for this project. The bottom line is that the additional services that this proposed expansion would permit would not only, would only enhance, not threaten, or impair the quality of life of the community or the town of Penfield. And now to my second issue, precedence. In our discussion with town and community leaders, the only real objections we have encountered to our proposed expansion has not been to its merits, which have been universally recognized. Rather, it has been that, rather, it has been that approval of our application would set a precedent that would somehow obligate the board in the future to give more favorable consideration to less beneficial proposals. This argument, I think, is not consistent with the foundational principles of our zoning law. This law lays out general provisions that this author believes, that its authors believe would promote and protect the quality of life in the town of Penfield. Additionally, the law includes a clearly defined process for deserving exceptions and for one or more board, one or more boards composed of a cross-section of independent citizen representatives to evaluate those proposals. If the zoning law did not foresee the possibilities that the town interests might be served by allowing occasional meritorious exceptions, the town would only need zoning enforcement officers, not independent citizen boards empowered to authorize exceptions and variances. I strongly believe that our proposed project is one of those anticipated exceptions to the general limitations imposed by our zoning law. There is nothing in our plan that is intrinsically damaging, nor has anyone identified a single hardship, cost, or penalty this expansion would inflict on any Penfield resident. Our sole purpose is to enhance the wellness and the quality of life of our town and the communities that the Eastside YMCA serves. Equally important, favorable consideration of our application in no way impairs the legal authority or shades the moral standing of this board to reject proposals that do not meet such a high standard. If the board concludes that it cannot approve our application because it finds what we propose is intrinsically damaging or would in any way detract from, not enhance, the quality of life of our town, we would respectfully defer to that judgment. In this process, the zoning law makes this board a guardian of the community's best interest. It would be a huge disappointment if our application were to fail despite the project's acknowledged merits solely because of reluctance to exercise cautiously but wisely discretionary authority which is vested in this board. As guardians of our town, your openness to a beneficial exception should be just as strong as your resistance to less worthy ones, sorry. The zoning law entrusts you to make that distinction. On behalf of the Eastside YMCA and its nearly 20,000 members, I implore this board, help us to help Penfield to become even in healthier and better place to live. So at this point, I'm just going to turn it over to Leon Sawyko and let him talk a little bit more about our application.
Thanks, Kevin. Good evening. My name is Leon Sawyko, S-A-W-Y-K-O. I'm an attorney with offices at 99 Garnsey Road in Pittsburgh. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. It seems like only yesterday that, along with George, we spent about a year and a half, actually, 2004, submitting the application and ultimately getting approval for the Y as it exists today. The zoning at that time, in 2004, was just as it is today. The piece of property on which the building is being constructed, the addition is going to be constructed, is owned RA-2. And the balance of the property is RR-1 under your zone. Under those zones, at that time and today, the use that's in place was not permitted under your code, strictly residential. Residential at that time and now allowed a single, one-family residence, plus, because part of it was agricultural district, plus customary farming and agricultural operations. That was a situation in 2004 when the original application was made and considered by this planning board. The decision was made at that time after consultation with the board, with its attorneys, with our planners, that we would apply for a conditional use permit, which we did at that time. And ultimately, that conditional use permit under Section 336-36 of your Penfield zoning code was granted. So following extensive review of the application, grant of the conditional use permit, success following a court appeal of that decision, the Y as you know it today was built and continues to serve the Penfield community. As explained by Kevin and as stated in the application, one of the proposed uses in this expansion will be for continuation and expansion of our wellness center. And that includes the entry into agreement with UR Medicine for the operation of a facility within the project. That seems to be the problematic issue right now. The question is, how can this be done under your code? And there really are three options. One would be a zoning change. That's time-consuming. We have no idea how long that would take. We know that the Penfield, town of Penfield is considering changes to its zoning code. We understand that that is in the works, it may happen soon, but soon is all relative. And soon may be next quarter, the following quarter, three quarters out, next year. We're talking about what we can do today. So we don't see zoning change as a feasible alternative. Zoning variance was suggested by various people. Those of you familiar with zoning variances recognize that we would need a use variance if we tried to put in a project that was contrary to the existing zoning code. That is an impossible burden to meet. You'd have to show that the property is economically not usable except by virtue of what we are proposing. Clearly, this project, this property is usable as a Y. It has been, it will continue to be usable as a Y. And then there's the third alternative, a conditional use permit. We're here to talk again about the conditional use permit. Our position is that in 2004, the board approved a conditional use permit. They found it qualified under 336 because it met all the tests set out there. And the Y's position is that that 2004 approval contemplated the current application and what we're trying to do today. It talked about a wellness center. And we laid out that in detail in a letter that I think you probably have in your file that was sent in by Chris Marks dated October 24th of 2013. And in that letter, we quoted the decisions of the planning board back in 2004. At that time, the application included among its proposed uses, and I quote, "A daycare center, playgrounds, two swimming pools, athletic fields, senior activity center, teen center, gymnasium, running track, wellness center, family adventure center, and a childcare facility," end of quotes. The resolution went on to find that the nursery school, swimming pool, and running track were all similar or identical to uses prescribed as conditional use permit purposes under the code. But then it went on and said, quote, "The ESED YMCA includes some uses specified by Section 3-36 and some uses not specified. Those uses not specified include a wellness center, family adventure center, and senior activity center," close quotes. This is all from the resolution in 2004. The next section continued, quote, "The board finds that the uses of the Eastside YMCA not specified by the applicant are similar in nature to the enumerated sections of Section 336 in that they provide recreational, athletic, and social outlets for members of the Eastside YMCA." So that's all in a decision from 2004 in the resolution that you have. Our current plan in dealing with this expansion of the wellness center is to partner with UR Medical Center, excuse me, UR, for the use of this space as described by Kevin. And the use would be for medical office and related clinic, therapeutic, and/or laboratory space. In addition to that, however, UR would have the ability, under its agreement, to use all the common space in the facility, that's halls, entryways, parking lots, et cetera. In addition to that, the YMCA would be cooperating with UR to allow UR to use exercise space, gymnasium space, meeting space, whatever else is available in the building that wouldn't conflict with ongoing Y programs. But the idea here is to partner with U of R. U of R becomes very much an integral part of the services that the Y is granting, that the Y is carrying out. When the proposal was approved back in 2004, the idea of wellness center had a certain meaning. Over time, that idea of wellness center has continued to expand. And today, wellness center really has the meaning that we're talking about today, providing this full service to the members of the Y. And originally, the approval was for a full-service YMCA. And our position is that today, what we are proposing is what is needed for a full-service YMCA. But if the board sees a problem with interpreting the 2004 decision to include what we're talking about today, our position is that the use that we're talking about right now would qualify on its own merits as a conditional use allowed under your code. The list of items allowed under your code under conditional use permits includes hospitals and proprietary healthcare facilities. Now, I've asked various people, what's a proprietary healthcare facility? We really don't know. Might be a nursing home, but it's not clear in your code. But it clearly provides for a hospital under the conditional use permit sections. And the use of hospital in that area would certainly be more intense than what we're talking about. Hospital would include types of services we're talking about and medical offices we're talking about, medical offices and somebody operating in consort with the Y providing an overall health and wellness program. Your section of the code that we're looking at, this 3.36, which sets forth conditional uses, lists 11 different, 10 different uses, and then there's a catch-all. And that catch-all was very important when we made application the last time around. And that catch-all talks about other uses not specifically listed above, but deemed by the board, having jurisdiction, U, to be similar in nature and compatible with the purposes of the district for which they are proposed. So we would argue that we're not a hospital, but the uses we're proposing are compatible with and similar to other uses allowed under that section of the code. Now, in order to qualify as a conditional use, there are other, a whole list of tests that have to be, that have to be met. And those tests are set out in your section 10.4 or 10-4 of your code, which state that "A conditional use shall comply with the standards of the zoning district in which it's located." Then it goes on to say, "In order to approve any conditional use, the board having jurisdiction shall find that the request is, number one, in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this ordinance and zoning district in which it is proposed." This is a residential district. It's not a residential use. The YMCA is far from a residential use. But the board found at that time in 2004 that the full-service Y conformed to this test. In addition, Section 2 of that 10.4 subdivision says that the application cannot be detrimental to adjacent properties because of its, and then there's a list of 11 different tests. In a letter of December 17th, 2013, submitted by, again, I think Chris Marks signed a letter to the board addressed to Ms. Evans, Chris went through the 10, 11 items that are set forth in your code and responded to each of them. I'll summarize them if you allow me to. First one is means of ingress and egress. Well, that is not changing. The current application proposes no change in the entrance or exit from the building. Second is adequacy of parking facilities. As Kevin mentioned, there will be a considerable expansion of the parking area and our engineer will be talking further about that momentarily. Potential impact to both present or future uses. The Y will continue to strive to provide those services necessary to provide to its members as beneficial a program as possible. There are no plans for any further expansion at this point. If there were, beyond what we're talking about now, obviously, we'd be back to see you one more time. Next test, compatibility with the general area in which it is to be located. There's not going to be any change from what's happened in that location from 2004 to date. We're continuing with the same use with a modest implementation of that use. Type and amount of signage. At this point, there is no request being made for changes in the signs. There may be a change in the language on the sign, but not the change in the sign itself. Potential noise level, the next test. This should not add any noise to the noise level from the facility. Clear sight distance. The proposed improvements are located to the rear of the building. Existing buildings have no effect on sight distance. Next test, existing or proposed buffering. There will be some additional buffering, landscaped area between the improvements and the neighbors to the south, the residential district to the south. Proposed generation of noxious odors. No odors will emanate from the facility. Individual members, we may send to this locker room, the showers, but not from the facility. Exterior lighting. There will be no lighting spilling over from the property to residential district or any other district. Last test was proposed hours of operation. The hours of operation will continue, just as they are now for the Y. I can't guarantee that U of R will operate those same hours, but if anything, there'll be less than the full hours that the Y is in operation. less than the full hours that the, that the Y is in operation. And the third test under 10.4, if you get past harmony with the general purpose and intent of the code, you get past these 11 various individual tests, then the third one is that the, the proposed use not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use, or detrimental or injurious to the property and improvements in the neighborhood, or to the general welfare of the town. And I think there's no question but that we meet that test. It will not be detrimental to the town or to the neighborhood. Let me get back to my notes. While this property is owned residential, you certainly can't look at it as a residential piece, as Kevin said. It's residential only in the code and on the zoning map. But following the decisions that were made in 2004, the inflammation of those, implementation of those decisions, development of the Y, this is anything but a residential site. As you, as you know, the property is bordered, is bordered, bordered on one side by residential, by a residential subdivision on the south. To the west, quite a ways from these improvements would be Pennfield Country Club. To the north, there's open land and a couple of commercial operations, Grossman's and, and Bill Wickham's facilities, and then a heavily traveled road under 250. So while it's residential, it'd be hard put to say that it's owned residential and it's used residential. This parcel has served and will continue to serve as a transition parcel, as contemplated by the code, and that was one of the findings that the board made in 2004. It continues as a buffer between the existing residential and the commercial and vacant land to the, to the north. Now, one of the concerns, and Kevin addressed this in some detail, was that this might set a bad precedent allowing a medical use in a residential zone. If this were not such a unique use already, I might agree with that. But I think it'd be hard, hard put to find anybody who would, who would list this as a residential piece. I think it'd be hard put to find any piece as unique as this, a residential zone, used properly under your code for a, for the type of use for the full-service YMCA. So while, while it would be the development or the allowance of a medical-related facility, doctor's offices in a residential zone, I fail to see how it could serve as any kind of reasonable precedent where someone could come in and make claim that they've got an application similar to this one. I think you've got to look at the overall site in the neighborhood. This is not an isolated residential piece. This proposed additional use of the doctor's office is a low-impact, or more correctly, no-impact use on the property. It's a use within the facility which cannot be considered residential. Now, I recognize that you all may be in favor of this. Maybe you're not, maybe you are. But even if you are, I recognize you have to have some basis in the code to make that decision if you want to be in favor of this application. And our position is that you certainly are justified to make the decision that this use can go forward based on the fact that this is a reasonable expansion, either an interpretation of the original conditional use permit, or expansion of the existing, of the, of the expansion of the existing one with a new determination that proposed use is, is an approved conditional use permit. The grant of this conditional use permit is justified by the code and by the facts in place in this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next man up.
I think at this point, Mark Henwood, who is our engineer, is going to come up and sort of explain the site plan to you. I think you've seen it once already. We've taken all of those comments into, into account, and Mark can respond to those and update you on that with the, with the site plan. Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Henwood with Erdman &amp; Anthony Consulting Engineers, 145 Culver Road, Rochester. We are, Erdman &amp; Anthony is the site engineer of record for the site plan. I have here a coward version of that site plan. The existing building is this tan outline here.
Can you use the handheld mic?
One of these.
Yeah. Make sure that it's on.
Press on.
You do, you know, testing, testing, something like that.
Is it on?
It is?
It is. Not technologically challenged, I guess.
Okay, we got word from the man downstairs that it's on.
Anyway, getting back here, the existing footprint is this white or tan area. Existing parking lot wraps around the north and west side behind the building and a little bit on the south side here as well. The addition on the, on here is a, about a 21,200 square foot footprint, and this is outlined in, in the dark brown. The dark gray is what we constitute really as a parking lot expansion. The white or gray areas are just areas of the parking lot that will be probably resurfaced or repaired as part of the overall construction. Some of the work includes bringing in some water and sewer rather than through the building, coming in from the outside the building. We have a total of like, let me get this right, existing 428 spaces, and back in 2004 approval, 2005, they also approved 116 land-banked ones. And that was generally over in this area here. There was some room for parking lot expansion. That was what it could have been, would have been or could have been built any time. The building construction addition will impact about 62 spaces, and the proposed total number of spaces, once we're all said and done, is 599. So there's an additional 171 spaces, of which 116 are land-banked, so it's a total net of 55 new spaces they're asking for approval of. That's predominantly in this back area here and in this flag off the south side. Landscaping was spoke about, adding some more islands and trees in those islands. Also, this landscape berm, a berm here to screen the parking lot and, from headlights of cars in the parking lot. It's planted with a mix of two different pine trees. I also show on here, it's taken from the current master plan for the facility, the future aquatic center off the south side here and how that fits in. That was one of the comments we received from PRC. We haven't, we have just begun addressing all the PRC comments, and I don't find them, there's a few that are a little bit challenging that the Y may speak about later. For the most part, we're getting down to just the details of the site plan. Drainage and grading and things of that nature. I can't add, I don't think I can add too much more. Steve Ferranti is going to get up and talk in a minute about how the new, a new entrance is going to be controlled. I think everybody is probably aware that the traffic signal has been warranted. And I'll turn it over to Steve now if there's any, not any questions or comments relative to the site plan.
Anybody else? I think we can have you guys do the whole presentation and then start asking questions.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Ferranti, Principal Engineer with SRF &amp; Associates, offices at 3495 Winton Place in Rochester. We've been retained by the Y to do a traffic impact study, typical for a project of this nature. The study and the scope of the study, we reviewed at the start in August of last year with town staff as far as what tasks and what, what items were included in the traffic study. We also reviewed that with the New York State Department of Transportation, since both agencies, the town as well as New York State, because of Route 250 being a state road, has to review and approve anything that is proposed here or identify any mitigation that is needed in order to accommodate this proposed project. We completed that study, and we also supplemented that study very recently with looking at the state, asked us, New York State DOT asked us to look at the coordination of the traffic signals on Route 250 from Wayland North to Atlantic, including a potential new signal at the, at the existing Y driveway. And I'll get into the details of that. So as part of that request and update, we studied, in addition to our original scope, which looked at Atlantic, Suites Corners, and the existing Y driveway, we included Wayland Road intersection. So we've included that entire stretch, consistent with the previous traffic study, I think, done back in 2005 or whenever with the original approval of this project. We went out and updated traffic counts for this project, looking at those intersections that study peaks are typical, some, little off from the commuter peaks, but 7:45 to 8:45 in the morning, 5:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon on weekdays. We scrutinized thoroughly information provided by the Y on traffic operations at other facilities in our area, so we knew the peaks of the Y and if, to what extent they coincide with the peaks of the street. When we look at those two, these are the peak hours that yield the highest volumes, so these are the ones we look at because we want to accommodate those volumes. As part of our review, we also looked at accident history at the existing Y driveway in, in the period from 2010 to 2012. There were no accidents. There may have been some fender benders, maybe unreportable. We don't know that, but as far as documented MV104 forms, none. So next step in our process was to look how much traffic would be generated by this added expansion. We use membership information, as I said, Y has extensive information on membership and traffic as well, so we can relate trip rates per membership. And that's typically what you want to do per the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the national guidance for how you perform these traffic studies. So we use that along with other information from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, IT, to come up with a trip generation. And what we expect, just to give you an ordered magnitude from this expansion, during those peak hours, in the morning and in the afternoon. In the morning, a total of 38 new trips to the area. And in the afternoon, in one hour, these are one-hour volumes, 61 vehicles per hour. That's new trips. Keep in mind, some of the traffic going to this facility today is already traffic on the street. We know that, we've documented that, that's in other reports we've done, and we can share that information with you. So we feel very confident with our numbers, more so than we would on many other projects, quite frankly. We then add that traffic on to the traffic that we've recorded at these intersections and analyze the intersection to see to what extent any mitigation is needed. I think as mentioned earlier, there's no significant adverse change in operation to warrant physical changes or mitigation in geometry, travel lanes, turn lanes. However, as part of our analysis, we took a very hard look because of the operating conditions getting out of the drive of the Y are difficult, to say the least, as you well know, anybody who uses the driveway. And so, as part of these studies, traffic studies, we look at what the state has of the traffic signal warrants. You look at guidelines to determine if a signal, if this is the time that a signal is justified at this location. They have extensive warrants, as many of you know, on the order of eight to 11. I can't keep track of them, they change often. But based upon our analysis, we've determined that a signal is warranted at this time. We also, New York State DOT also reviewed our information, sent people out here to actually verify our information, and they concurred with our recommendation that a traffic signal should be installed at this time at the new, at the driveway. The signal will be a fully operational signal, three signal, you know, red, yellow, green. There'll be pedestrian indications there. We are, we would be prepared, and we've already started the signal design. We will design and make, make provisions to accommodate a four-legged intersection, four-way intersection, as well as for the pedestrians, all at that point. And with the signal in place, we get very good operating conditions, the delays are cutting half for people getting out of the Y. It's much safer, obviously, because of the higher speeds on Route 250. And that is the results, basically, of our traffic report.
Left turn lane arrow, or no?
No. At this time, no. But then it's not to say in the future. New York State DOT specifically, specifically said in their approval letter, no arrow at this time. That may change. We've looked at it, just for information, we've looked at it with an arrow, and it can operate well without significantly impacting Route 250 traffic. That's what New York State would be concerned with, the north-south through traffic. It can accommodate a left turn arrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Jeffrey Rollison. I'm an architect with LaBella Associates, 300 State Street, Rochester, New York. I'm going to quickly talk about the architecture of the building. As Mark pointed out earlier where the footprint of the building is, the physical form of the building is going to really flow to the west, be a two-story structure, and introduce a secondary entrance. We're going to utilize the same language that the current facility has, utilizing the existing materials, the warmth of the brick and the wood, brick, stone, and glass. And with this branch only being a little over seven years, those materials are readily available, and we feel will match very well.
Good evening. I'm George Ramel, President and CEO of the YMCA of Groote, Rochester, 444 East Main Street. Want to thank everybody for coming and the board for, for hearing us. Kevin, your mother is here, and she missed your speech, so she wants you to do it again.
She can watch it on TV.
Watch it on DVR. I'm very lucky to have such a great team. We've had a longstanding relationship with this community. It's a lesser-known fact, there are two YMCA's in this community, as, as we point out on a regular basis. One serves up in the north, but this project has been almost 15 years in undertaking. We've had discussions with the town since early 2000, when the discussion about acquiring the land, and we, we thank the board for their support, and we hope that you are pleased with what we feel is a premier Y in this country. And I don't want to understate that because Kevin's leadership, who came here before the construction, has been a big part of that. What you see here is a result because of the success and how this community has embraced those services. And we feel a big part of what we do in our communities is lessening the burden of government. And I think this is a great example of what an organization like the Y and communities can do to work together to create a quality-of-life aspect, and we thank you for that. We're very excited about this proposal. It's certainly not new to you. During the process, beginning in, I think, '03 and all the way through the approval process, we basically laid out all our cards on the table. We were asked by the board to show what the, what the ultimate master plan development was of the 58 acres that we own, what we were thinking about, what we were planning. None of this is new to you. The concept of a hospital partnership may in fact be different to you, but a progressive YMCA, and there are 100 in this country that have done this, so this is not a new aspect. Right down the street in Buffalo, New York, there's a 90,000-square-foot YMCA that opened with a wellness partner, and I would encourage you to see that if, if you, if you want to see that. My colleague Buddy Campbell, who stood in front of you all those years to get this approval, leads that YMCA. So not, not incompatible at all. We feel like this is the next evolution. What's happened in that seven, eight years to get to this point is really extraordinary, the kind of growth that we've had. But in our communities, chronic disease prevention is a huge, huge, huge issue. And we've got to address it. We've got to find a way to have this synergy be at a greater level, and this is our, our way of, of doing this. We believe it's tasteful, we believe it will complement, not detract. We don't in any way see this as simply a rental where they're renting space. We're not into that. We want a partner that will, will work with us, and UR Medicine is a, is a fantastic organization that we've worked many years to try to get this in different places, and this is the one we feel is, is the one that we'll, we'll go forward on. I think that, that what's exciting about this, it is more. I think that we listened to the board's input and several other, some board members are here, some are newer, and some are no longer on the board, but we're sensitive to what it would look like from the street. I remember the discussions very clearly about, why aren't you getting a traffic light in the beginning? We've answered, we've answered those questions. We, we've addressed all of those concerns, and I think that the team we have assembled here will work with the town to dot all the i's and cross the t's. And there's some urgency here. We were here in the fall and had the, the preliminary discussion, and sat in the back and listened to the comments of the board regarding the overall flavor of the, of the expansion with the idea of what is the zoning issue? What is the conditional use permit issue? And I would implore you to, to think about what, what is that decision? Because I do agree that this is a unique, unique parcel, and was clearly unique from the day we bought it. You know, typically, we would not, not purchase this much land and, and develop it and have, have these concepts and lay all those cards. have these concepts and lay all those cards out there, so I think that's really important. Lastly, I'll just say that many of you know that our YMCA and nationally went through a little bit of a logo change, and that caused some signage challenges for us, and thank you for, for your support as, as the National Y put into place the, the new brand strategy, which is much more than a brand. It's, it's the discussion about youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. But if you look on the national site, you see a statement that cuts through all of the 170 years of history of the organization, and it says these words, strengthening the foundation of community. And that's what we are, and that's what we want to continue to be, and we need to be a cutting-edge YMCA. This YMCA has always been cutting-edge, it is always ranked at the top of, top of this country. We have hosted, I don't know, over 100 different organizations of communities of YMCA's to look at this model and say what it is. So you have a unique place in this movement, this worldwide movement of a YMCA that gets looked to as what's next, what's cutting-edge, and we hope that you'll support that. I know there's some people that want to, want to speak, so I'll be brief, thank you for your attention to this.
Thanks, George.
We'll just, questions about the proposal or anything?
Okay. Who wants to go first?
I have questions.
Have at it.
I'm curious to know about the, the quote-unquote partnership. Is this a lease agreement that you've entered into with a healthcare services provider, and they're going to lease space from you, and you're going to collaborate on shared infrastructure and, and, and maybe shared patronage? Or, or is this a partnership where they have a duty to you for a specific period of time and, and a, and a defined list of, of services? And, and to finish this thought, how, how do we know that this doesn't continue to succeed so well that it morphs into something more than a wellness center, which I'm not sure we've really defined?
Okay. So over the periods of negotiations, and the two organizations do have a memorandum of understanding, we do not have a contractual relationship yet, but we do have a signed letter of commitment by both organizations which lay out the, the specifics of it. It is very much along the partnership of continuum of care, about sharing resources, about sharing audiences, and sharing customer base, and finding compatible ways to work together. There is a component of it that will involve lease of space, that's one block of this, of this expansion, but there are, there's already collaboration that has begun for the last two years at that facility that does not involve that, that lease of space in, in our current branch here at, in Penfield, and also at our West Side branch in Gates as well. Doing programming that's consistent and compatible with, with community needs. So I think overall, we, we do not feel that this is something that would morph to, you know, a whole nother complex. We're, we're both approaching this very cautiously to see how it will work. We've had a number of discussions, and there's, there are, there's representation here from the university to, that we're very pleased to work with, to get to the point of what do we want in there? What is the best solution? What is the best way? And I give them a lot of credit for figuring out what is the best way to, to work, understanding the Y audience, understanding all, all of these pieces. We came to grips very quickly that what we thought was going to be a minor second door to the Y coming into this space is now going to be a major thoroughfare, and to think about it in terms of having two entrances to them all. And we immediately flipped, flipped gears on the design and said, okay, we need to be as grand as we were in the front to make sure that, that we're doing this, particularly with the way that, that the parking rolled out, that, that we wanted to, to not have it tucked away in a corner, or have it, well, this is kind of the, you know, the second cousin of it. Very much compatible, very much, the teams have been meeting with Kevin's group for a good six to eight months now, there's many, many players involved. And yes, there's absolutely a financial arrangement to help us do this, I don't think this could happen without, without that setup, so we feel very good about that.
So, how long is this lease agreement going to be for?
Right now, again, we don't, we do not have a firm contractual relationship, but-
Just give us some idea of-
10 years with two five-year options.
So 10 plus 5 plus 5?
Yep.
So let me ask you this. The, the university, of course, is a, a not-for-profit organization. What happens if your, if your partner becomes someone else that's a for-profit organization?
In terms of-
In terms of having a, a parcel of land in a, in a very developed facility that's tax-exempt?
Okay, great, great question. There are examples of YMCA's that have relationships with entities that are taxed for unrelated business income, that-
So there's nothing in your bylaws or your charter that would prohibit you from doing that, and you would not be opposed if in the future that your, your new partner or, or a change in your partnership resulted in some, some tax levy, you would not be opposed to that?
Meaning, the, the entity that would, that would occupy that space if it wasn't the, a not-for-profit organization?
Well, you know, keep in mind that we're not, they're not coming to us for approvals, you are.
Yeah.
So it's your facility, and so we're asking the question of you.
So if the YMCA were to have a, a restaurant in there, I think we clearly have had precedence in, in the country and in our community, that unless there's a compatible mission purpose, it's treated as unrelated business income. Whether it's exempt from property taxes, I don't know the legal, the legal-
I, I don't know either, I'm just trying to get some information on the record.
That's a very valid question.
Okay, so what happens now if, if the university takes one of its many partners that are for-profit healthcare service providers, all the small pockets of doctors' groups and so forth, and say, this is a great satellite location for you to provide orthopedic care or, or what have you? So, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to, to make sure that, that you guys have thought about this, and while we're thinking about the approval process, that we understand that this is something that, that is not likely to result in a, you know, for-profit entity that competes with people that in fact pay property taxes and so forth in the town.
Understandable. I think the university's been very deliberate and cautious in its planning to make sure that the services that it wants to provide that are in concert with us are, are compatible. And I think that is an important piece.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question on the type of service that's going to be offered in the, in the wellness center. I read there might be some imaging, I'm wondering what kind of imaging is that going to be? Is there going to be any surgery, same-day surgeries? Right now, I, I don't know what kind of medical services are going to be provided, so could, could you describe those?
Without having full contractual relationship at this point, it, there, there is a, there's a template. I don't expect that it to be full operating services or anything like that, we've not discussed that, but we, we essentially have a, a footprint that the university is working hard with all of its groups to figure out exactly what can occur. We can provide you with more detail on that.
Okay, okay, fair enough. Do you know what the patient load will be?
They've given us very clear indication of what the patient load is in other types of operations, which, which gave us thought about the number of parking spots that would be dedicated to that, to that patient load.
Okay. What is that number?
Don't quote me exactly, but I believe it's 36, of which 18 are dedicated close to the entrance and another 18 that would be in the general parking. Is that, am I close on that?
Close, yeah.
Okay.
This would be a pretty busy operation.
He's talking parking spaces.
Parking spaces. Comparative to the members that are there during that time of day, that's a very small number.
I just have one other question for now, and it's not related to the medical facility there, but is there any plan to put a sidewalk from the, on the east side of 250, south of the Y? There's an existing sidewalk there, I forget the, the housing development there, the name of it, but to extend that sidewalk up to that intersection of the Y where the pedestrians could cross?
Are we talking, which direction are we talking here?
South of the YMCA on the east side of 250.
On the east side of 250, I'm not, not aware of it at this point.
There's nothing that we're proposing, it was our understanding when, when we went to the PRC that that would be one of the high-priority places that they would place sidewalks, so we have talked to the town about that, so it would actually be opposite. And I think, as Steve alluded to, we're actually working that into our signal warrant, so we will have pedestrian crossing and a crosswalk there. We would put the, the pad for, to bring a sidewalk to, but my understanding was the town was working on that to bring the sidewalks there.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the-
I had one question. Getting back to the types of services, I know you haven't, there's nothing contract-wise in place yet, but you mentioned the Buffalo facility?
Yes.
Could you explain, so we kind of can kind of calibrate around what that might be?
Sure.
The types of services that the Buffalo facility-
And Katie, I believe, has documentation from us that outlines 46 different YMCA arrangements throughout the country, from massive 60,000-square-foot medical operations to 3,000-square-foot medical operations, and certainly would encourage you to look at that. That number has only doubled in the past couple of years. If there's not a Google alert that goes out at least once a week where I don't see another YMCA engaged in, in substantive talks with hospital systems. So the one in Buffalo is actually operated in conjunction with Independent Health, which is an HMO like an Exelis or an MVP provider that provides wellness services, rehabilitation, doctor's consults, therapy, all of the, of those things. I believe they also have cardiac rehab, but that is approximately 9,500 square feet, and is a Y that opened less than a year ago.
Do you know what the zoning district is at that Y?
I would guess it's probably more commercial, AJ.
So this was from-
It's on transit roads, so I, I'm guessing that it's next to Erie Community College.
So this was from day one, when the facility initially opened?
Yeah, but there are examples in the documentation we provided you of many, many, many Y's that have done this as an adjunct and a, and I think, we, you know, it's not a secret that we're looking to duplicate the efforts of this Y in another community, and as we designed that, it would certainly include it. I think we were right on the, right on the edge of it when we built this building in '06 and started construction in '06, and now it's really flourished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the, the wellness center component critical to the project?
It's essential.
So, without that, you wouldn't, couldn't, what?
Could not, and would not.
Could not, so you, depending on the rental income from your tenant, basically, to finance the expansion?
No, we're, we're depend, the, the expansion is being financed from a number of sources. We're asking the community to raise a significant amount of money, which we're well on our way to doing that. We're asking the university's help in their, in their portion, we're looking at it from a long-term financing standpoint, it's part of the whole mix, but it's critical, it's critical to make it happen.
Just, just the other portion, this is when you, you, when you talk about partnership, we think, and we believe, and we wouldn't be doing this partnership without UR Medicine if we didn't think there's some continuity of services back and forth. We think that we'll be able to pull additional memberships and additional services through people that are using their services and vice versa. So that's how part of this model is based on, is that we're going to get some of their referrals as they go through physical therapy and different things like that, and then we also know, as we have members that are coming into the Y looking for additional services, we have a great place to refer to them right down the, right down the hallway in a sense.
Let's get to you folks, and if anybody on the board has a question in the meantime or at any point in time, feel free. I have a list of people who would like to speak, so I'll start at the beginning. John, is it Cogan? Come on now, come on down.
John Cogan, 9 Sorrento Drive in Penfield slash Webster. I own a business and I have a house there. I've been on the board since before the Y was constructed.
The YMCA board?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm a volunteer and have been for seven years. What strikes me is the way that this has grown and how our community, as a member of the community living here, how seniors gather there. I went through some special training through the Y that allowed me to have a different lifestyle. And one of the things that excites me is the thought of having other people trying to make those changes, and maybe we have an issue, and maybe down the hall I'd have a qualified physician or a good support team that we don't have. And we have excellent ambulance services and that sort of thing, but I think this really goes a long way towards helping people with the Live Strong program, the cancer stuff. We don't turn anybody away, we don't charge them, so as they go through cancer, maybe they can't afford anything, and we, we bring them in, we make it free, and, you know, those are big life challenges. So when we have a unique opportunity with the U of R and the qualified staff at the Y to put this together, I'd really like to see it happen.
Thank you. Okay, Ray Hutch?
I'm Ray Hutch, I, I've lived in Penfield for 38 years and had my business there for 43, and I've had a great experience-
Could you give us your address?
With the Y, I'm in 1931, 5 Mile Line Road, the corner of Wayland and 5 Mile, have been in there for 38 years, and it's the oldest home in Penfield. During my 43 years living and working in Penfield, it's been a great experience that the town has consistently lived to the slogan of a town of planned progress, which of course is your slogan. And this was illustrated almost eight years ago, when our board approved the, the building of the east side Y. Since then, our Y has grown to provide, as has already been said, but many services to around 20,000 members, many of whom live in Penfield. Our Y has truly become a second community center where we can all go for many special programs and activities. And our membership includes people from all ages and needs, from daycare to providing for the elderly, often requiring rehab facilities. In order to continue to accommodate our growing need, we, we need to expand the facility. And one of the primary benefits and goals of this expansion is to provide a rehab center where our people can go, and others as well, to get treatment as needed. We have been fortunate in getting a major healthcare system to agree to sponsor and assist in funding this facility. This was a critical component to funding the cost of the planned expansion, and we'll all benefit from our town's continued support of the Y, so I encourage you to continue to support as you have in the past, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Andy Moore?
Andy Moore.
Is he gone? Okay. We got something better to do? All right, Gino Massey?
I'm just here, I own the, the land south of it. I'm just, I'm concerned about the use of, of the land that I have there, it's about six and a half acres, six, almost seven acres, it's owned residential, and I would like to do higher density. So, you know, because it has changed a lot, to try to put residential there, it's not, with all the parking and, you know, cars there and all that, even though it's a buffer, I would, and I've been, this, this goes back five years ago or six years ago when- I would, and I've been, this goes back five years ago or six years ago when the town was thinking of rezoning the area, and I, you know, I submitted a letter saying that I would be, I would be.
You might talk, yeah.
I would be for it, you know, that I would like to see that done, that happen.
You'd like to see?
The, be able to do a higher density development.
So you'd like, you'd be in favor of rezoning your property?
Right.
To allow a higher density use?
Right, it could, it doesn't, it could still be residential, but attached, you know, units like patio villas or stuff like that, you know, so that I could get more unit out of it.
Okay.
I emailed, you know, your information, I don't know if you need, if you wanted to look at?
If you could leave it with Katie for the record, that'd be terrific.
My kids still, every time they hear the Y, they say, Dad, why didn't you get the free membership? They asked me then and I didn't, you know, so, but anyway, I'd just like to be able to get a little bit more than just three, four houses there, a single family, you know, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
How do you guys feel about it?
Well, we don't have the authority to.
Right, okay.
Change the zoning, that's a town board decision. We just get the privilege of enforcing them.
Yeah. Well, whatever can be done, I would really appreciate it if it's possible. The Y is possible, you know, I was willing to, to work with they because I tried to get a, a, a single-family houses there for a couple of years, you know, back and forth to the town and all that.
I remember that.
Okay. I just, it was getting tougher and tougher with sidewalks and recreation area and, you know, lights and all that, sidewalks on both sides of the street and kind of, so, but, that's, that's why I have to say I don't want to hold you up there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Pietro? No, you know what, he came for the other public hearing. Sir, Michael Quinn, would like to comment on this? You were for the other one?
Yes.
Okay. Robert Lunn? Yeah, I had all these beats from the previous hearings.
I guess the key is if you wait long enough, you go right to the top of the list.
Exactly right.
I'd like to thank the Planning Board for the opportunity to appear here this evening. My name's Robert Lunn. My wife is present as well. We live at 44 Rockbridge Lane in Country Club East, and we're indeed one of the neighboring residential properties. And both of us appear here this evening in very strong support of this, of this application. I want to emphasize just a couple of points and kind of follow up on what was said, what was said earlier. First of all, I've been a resident of this great town, and I mean that sincerely since 1976. My wife is, as well as, lived in Penfield since the early 70s. We've put kids through the schools, and it is a tremendous community. And I'd like to thank the board for the work you do, tireless work, and I'm familiar with it. I once worked for the town of Penfield, I was your local judge out here for three years before I was given the opportunity to go on to State Supreme Court and thereafter. And I can't think of a better place to live. And it's been mentioned a few times, but I think to a certain extent it's kind of been glossed over, the, the fact that this Y is rated number one. And I'd like to just take a moment to pause and think about that. We've got 50 states in this great country and over 300 million people, and the town of Penfield is blessed, and I mean that sincerely, is blessed to have the number one rated Y in the United States, okay, in customer satisfaction. And I think what's being proposed will really add to that, the, the community spirit, the Wellness Center, if we ever do adequately define that, but I think I know what it means, and I recall a judicial decision once, I won't get into details, but our highest court, US Supreme Court, saying, I can't define it, but I know it when I see it, okay? And we won't, we won't go into that anymore, but I think I know what they mean by the wellness concept, the Wellness Center. I was particularly pleased to selfishly, and we're members of the Y by the way, particularly pleased to hear about the expansion of parking, but I think I would be remiss if I don't put this comment on the record, which I alluded to once. I used to write a bi-monthly column for the Daily Record, and I, I said, you know, certain things when you're a judge, you have time to think, because you get bored to death sometimes hearing cases before you. One of the things, and this is on the record, isn't it? I'm not running again, I'm retired.
That doesn't happen with planning applications.
Yeah, right, there you go. But to, I make these observations, and I see it even today, with very healthy, young, ambulatory people that belong to the Y will come and drive around endlessly looking for a parking space close to the front door so they can go in and walk for five miles. And I've never quite solved it in my own mind, and so, you know, why that is such a big issue, but I support it, Kevin, if you're looking to come in here with more parking, that's fine. The only thing I'll add is they are tremendous neighbors. We could not have asked for better neighbors. And even to the extent that Kevin emailed me last week, Paul and I went in Monday night to, to talk to him about what was going on with the proposed expansion. The only issue we've ever had had nothing to do with the Y or the, the members of the Y. It actually came down to some geese that decided to come into the town of Penfield in that particular area that found my backyard and my immediate neighbors to my left and right, found our yards very attractive, but they seemed to originate over in the Y. And I don't think anybody ever knew why, but, excuse the pun, everybody, nobody really knew why, why that was happening, but Kevin and the board and the Y took it upon themselves to put in some horns that made some very, what's the word I'm looking for? Interesting sounds that just scared them away, and, you know, now they're back to kind of staying on the pond and doing their thing and floating around and entertaining our grandchildren among others, but they've just been great neighbors. And, you know, we complained about that, they addressed it immediately. That's been, that's been it. I mean, and we've lived there since 1999. We're so glad to see them coming in with this proposal. We use it regularly. I've learned a lot tonight, by the way. I had no idea why they swiped us in when I went in through the front door. Now I realize they're keeping, keeping account on us. Honestly, I thought it was to report back to my wife how many times I was going a week, okay? That they were going to issue. Yeah, right, right, so.
She gets a text message.
So, I, that's it. I support it. If you want to ask any questions about me as an immediate neighbor to the south, that's me, I'm just over the, the pond that I think somebody, I don't know if it was the Planning Board or some other town entity nicknamed Lunn Pond, thank you for that if it was you. Any questions for me? Don't ask me to point north and south out on a map, by the way, I can't, can't do it. Thank you.
No, thank you very much for your comments. Okay, we have Sue Quackenbush.
Hi, I'm Sue Quackenbush, and I live at 5 Rockbridge Lane, the other end of the street from you guys. And I wanted to talk about some pros and a concern I have about the expansion of the Y, and it sounds like you've partially addressed it, but I need to bring it to everybody's attention. First of all, I am a member of the Y. I joined the Y before they even opened. I absolutely love the Y, and a lot of the things that they're going to do in this expansion as a Y member, I think are absolutely necessary. More restrooms, more lockers, a better spinning area. You can't even get in the classes because they're so full. If you don't get there 45 minutes early, good luck. So I'm very excited about the expansion. However, because I live in Country Club East, which is the neighborhood immediately next to the Y, I and everybody else in the neighborhood has been affected by the increase in traffic. I can tell you that the increase in traffic has been exponential since the opening of the Y. We have a lot of trouble getting out of the subdivision recently. Now, I know as of about, I think it was three years ago, we had at the Y, I think it was 16,000 members. That's a lot of traffic going back and forth that wasn't in that stretch. I don't know what the membership is now, but I know that we're still trying to gain members at the Y, so it's only going to get more. And when this expansion happens, it will make the Y even more desirable, because I've heard comments about not enough parking, it's crowded every hour it's open, et cetera. I love the Y. I want this expansion to happen, but it would be completely irresponsible unless we take some major steps to address the traffic issues. I'm very excited that they went to the trouble to do a traffic study, and I think a light is absolutely necessary. I'm disappointed to hear that it won't include a left turn lane. But I want to point out, that will not solve all the problems. We can't get out of our neighborhood onto 250. I'm talking about even turning right, much less turning left. It is very challenging. I'm retired, so I'm traveling back and forth at all times of the day, and it is not uncommon for me to have to wait five minutes to turn left out of our neighborhood. That's a very long time when you're sitting in your car. So I'd like to suggest that we also do some additional steps so we can make this happen, because I want it to happen. So a couple of my suggestions would be to lower the speed limit from 50, it's 50 at the Y, to 40. I would also suggest that we get one of those electronic signs, make the Y buy it, one of those electronic signs to be permanently there that shows people's speeds as they go by, or two of them, so each direction. And then we need some turning lanes, not just for our neighborhood, Country Club East, which shares the same side of 250 as the Y, but also the neighborhood kitty corner across the street. I'm forgetting the name right now, but somebody knows it. We need to get into our neighborhood, we need a left turn lane, and to get into our neighborhood, we need a right turn lane, no, I'm talking about a left turn lane from the south and a right turn lane from the north. There is a very wide shoulder there and some community property there, so to add a right turn lane, I think would be very easy. It would not be impinging on anyone's property to do so. But let's not wait until there is serious injury or even death in that stretch of road. It is incredibly dangerous. People are going way too fast. When it's posted 50, they're going significantly more than that frequently. My husband came in the house shaking two weeks ago. He was stopped trying to turn left into the development off of 250, and somebody came up behind him and foolishly tried to pass him on the left, on the inside, and there was a car coming. He was so shaken, I can't even tell you, and since then, he has used the other entrance into our development, which isn't so convenient and isn't the way that you necessarily want to be going. But that's how much it scared him, and I've heard other neighbors talk about many near misses. So please, let's be proactive and preempt a very sad possibility from happening. Let's be responsible and do the right thing here. And I absolutely want this to happen, but please, let's be careful with the traffic. It's not just in front of the Y, it's the whole stretch. Thank you.
I have a question for you, please. Have you filed a formal complaint with the Transportation Committee?
I haven't, I never even knew that that was an option.
Okay. It is an option, and it's really the only way to, to get a particular traffic issue in the community on the agenda and get the Transportation Committee talking about it and talking with the County Department of Transportation to see if, whether or not there are some traffic calming procedures that could improve that. So if, if these are experiences that you and your neighbors experience often, I would encourage you to, to file a formal complaint. There's a, there's a mechanism on the town's website to do that and to get your neighbors to do that as well.
Oh, thank you very much. I didn't even know there was a Transportation Committee, so thanks.
So if you wanted to talk to an individual about that process in addition to looking online, the Engineering Department facilitates the Transportation Committee, and of course you can always reach out to the Planning Department and it will help direct you if it's not our, our department.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. That's all slips of paper I have. Are there any other comments, sir, in the back?
Good evening, I'm Bill Wickham. My wife and I own Wickham Farms at 1821 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, AKA Route 250. And I'm here tonight, sorry, I came late because I, I had a meeting, Kevin, but I, I came, so I didn't sign in. I'm here to, I'm here to speak in support of the project. I just want to say, in terms of a neighbor, I not only have the premier YMCA in the country next to me, next door to me, I also have a premier neighbor, and I always tell my kids, you know, you can, you can choose your friends, you can't choose your neighbors, and wow, when Buddy Campbell and George approached me 10 years ago, I, I didn't know what to think with, with having the YMCA maybe as a neighbor, and it turned out actually as a shared entrance. And you would think that's kind of incongruent, a farm and a, and a, the premier YMCA in the country. And I can tell you, the partnership and the, the opportunity to work together, you know, we constantly are talking back and forth about ways that we can work together, and, you know, a perfect example of it is parking. And, you know, I, while I'm talking about partnerships, you know, I think of, you know, 20 years ago or 30 years ago, I guess, when I was in college, you know, things were not, were much more clear-cut. A grocery store was a grocery store, a farm was a farm, a gas station was a gas station. And I think about some of the things in the community today, you know, you go to Wegmans and wow, it's a lot more than a grocery store. I know in Pittsburgh now, you can drive through and pick up your, your groceries. The Hess Station, right on the corner, I can, I can get a Whopper with fries while, while I'm there. Who knew? Who knew? You know, I, I have a farm market, and, and we have mini golf and batting cages, you know, things, things are just a little bit, a little bit more, there's a little bit more gray area, I think, today, and so for me to look at the YMCA and say, gosh, a Wellness Center, that, that doesn't seem as gray to me as, as some of the other, some of the other partnerships. And I think that there are some economic realities of today that force us all to look at partnerships, and, and I think that's a good thing, you know, when we can share facilities. And what got me onto this was, you know, shortly after Kevin opened, or the Y opened next door, and we all get our, you know, our New Year's resolution, and I'm doing it this year. But, but Kevin drove by, he said, holy cow, you know, we've got so many people coming, where are we going to park everybody? And, you know, the obvious answer, it wasn't obvious until we each drove by it for, for a week or so, and said, hey, you know what, there's no one in my parking lot right now at all. And so the Y staff, although on, on certain days when it's, I think there were a couple days last week when it was rather chilly, they, they didn't appreciate it a whole lot, Kevin. But the membership, on the other hand, I think does appreciate that they're walking from my, from my parking lot over there. But, but those are the kind of partnerships, and likewise, for me to be able to, to have the parking that, that I might need on a, on a sunny Saturday afternoon in October, you know, it would not be economically feasible, and yet, you know, the Y is right next door and we can share services like that. So again, I would just say that in terms of a neighbor, I hit the jackpot with, with the YMCA next door, and, you know, I'm, I'm here to say that I hope the Wellness Center is a part of the project and that the expansion moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose?
Nice to see you again. My name is Rose Stat Hanscom, I live at 145 N H R Drive in Penfield. I am a member of the Y, but I also have the great privilege of working with members at the Y, and four members at the Y. Talk about partnerships, you can't beat the partnerships you make with the members there. But this proposal in this area makes perfect sense to me, and to my family. The comprehensive plan of 2010 identifies the property of the YMCA to be part of a projective, projected mixed-use zoning district. And I remember sitting, meeting after meeting, in the comprehensive planning when it was talked about how much the Y was the center of this community, and how much it was the focus of this mixed-use. So, it just makes perfect sense to me that this proposal goes through. It anticipates a pedestrian-orientated development with an emphasis on interaction within the built environment rather than the permitted use. Reiterating the words from the town's website, "The purpose of the new mixed-use district is to provide more effective use of costly infrastructure, to reduce costs associated with energy use and transportation, and to increase access to amenities. What better way to actualize the purpose of a mixed-use district than to provide a health and rehabilitative center within the Y?" First, in terms of rehabilitation, I wish I had the opportunity to go to a physical therapist at the Y when I had broken my ankle and had several knee injuries. Instead, I went to another facility in Webster and tried to reconfigure the exercises that that therapist gave me using the Y's equipment, because I knew long-term use, I was going to use that equipment. I'm still not sure I got it right, but what I would have loved, if I had the therapist right on site, using that equipment to be able to transition my health at that particular point. Secondly, in terms of the health center, how cool would it be to have a family physician there prescribe an exercise or rehab regimen that you could incorporate right there at the Y? I mean, it just would be such a privilege to have that here in Penfield. And a concern I have is that the Center for Disease Control has identified that one in three children are overweight in the United States, that is, too few calories are expended for the amount of calories consumed. Most parents want to have their children to be more active, but they struggle to find activities that are engaging for children, particularly in the cold winter months. The quality and the quantity of activities that a family can do together at the Y to be healthier individually and as a family unit are so encouraging and motivating to heal there, and you only have to use the facility to know how motivating it is to, to go there. I mean, it's just, it's a highlight of my day after work to go to the Y, and I do it every single day. For me, and for those of us who use the Y to exercise, relax, and heal, we, we know we experience the community spirit there, we look forward to seeing our friends and our family there, we look to each other for support and care in times of stress, we know each other by name. It, it's amazing how many members come up to me and appreciate the fact that we care about them by name. I can't imagine a better place, a better facility to promote a mixed-use that is so in line with each other, that in the future, as the mixed-use district grows, and it will grow, because that is the plan, hopefully, that is, that is delineated in the 2010 plan, residents will be able to walk and bike to the Y for their well-being. And to address that, gentlemen who wants his residential to be more dense, how perfect, how perfect, it just seems, mixed-use, people walking to the Y, walking to their doctors, I just see it as a win-win situation for everybody. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rose. Okay, do we have, come on up?
Good evening, I'm Mike Hanscom, 145 N H R Drive. I'm a 30-year member of the YMCA, I started with the Metro Center Y downtown when it first opened. I always thought that was the premier Y in the area until they opened up the East Side Y, and I believe that is now. I just, I'm here to ask a couple of questions of the, of the applicant, and request a couple of things from them. When you're looking at the reconstruct, the site planning-
Actually, if you could just address us, and then-
Okay, the site planning process, I would appreciate if they could look at the entrance and the regrading of the entrance itself. The slope of the entrance right now is steep enough that in the wintertime, when there's significant snowfall, many vehicles have a very difficult time making it up out of the, out of the Y, and it would be a much safer place to exit if they could regrade the entrance and lessen the slope. And then, one question I'd like to have them answer with regards to the medical facility, is occasionally at the Y, a medical emergency arises, whether someone has a drop in blood pressure because they've been exercising too hard, they have a heart attack, someone has a problem in the pool or in the hot tub, would they be providing any type of emergency facilities, emergency services to help out the Y in case of an emergency at that location? That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you can address those.
As far as the, the slope and the grade, we, we've looked, we'll look at that, I think Jeff Kogan, one of our staff members was here, he was actually pushing people up the driveway last week, so we know that that's an issue, so we'll, as that traffic light gets there, we'll, we'll look to do that. As far as any type of partnership with UR Medicine, when we have emergencies in the, in the facility, I'm sure as our partnership grows and expands, we'll try and figure that out. But as George says, right now, we just have a memo of understanding, so we're not exactly sure how that would work out, but I would anticipate if we had somebody who had a heart attack, and they had the, the skill and expertise down with UR Medicine, they would, they would come right out and lend a hand and, and help us in there. But again, we don't have any type of agreement at this point.
Yeah, I would just, in regards to the driveway, I would remind the board that you had us move that driveway, which increased the grade, so when we, when we got to the final approval, that driveway moved to not coincide with the neighbor that was across the street. We, we did significant grade upgrades at that point, I don't know if engineering-wise, I'll, you know, leave it to our experts to determine what, if anything, could be done, whether it's, you know, coursing the pavement or something like that, but that, that clearly is because of the hump going on to 250 and the way the property goes down, I'm not sure that it's something that we, we could address, and we'll certainly look at it.
Okay, thanks. Any other members of the audience care to share their thoughts on this? Okay, any more questions from the board? Great presentation, thank you very much. We will call this hearing closed, and we'll reconvene in the back of the auditorium. Thanks for coming, everybody.